...where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who would like to make a move to sign the warrants?
The motion.
I will sign that.
All in favor? Warrants. They just come off the budget meeting, so. It's not well. Stuff jumping around. Any other ones? We need also a motion to approve the minutes from May fifteenth.
For who?
Uh, second.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, electric vehicle charging station update.
Ooh.
I might invite John to chime in on this. He and I met with the president of the Lubec Area Chamber of Commerce, Debbie Holmes, regarding an electric vehicle charging station. Because John Rule and I both attended, coincidentally, a forum that was online describing a grant that's available to get electric vehicle charging stations in here now. And after a lot of thought, it seems like it was more of a business should be, businesses should be involved in this. And kind of the chamber, which has just been newly reformed, seemed to be the ones to go, the avenue and the vessel to start working.
Or to do the, to do the, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so after the meeting with Debbie, it seemed very positive and she's running with it and she's books up, it's in our hands right now and I asked you what, do you know and John know if there's anything that we can do to help.
It has to be not, uh, the town of Lubec actually has to apply correctly.
Right, right.
Well, my only suggestion is, and I think it's claimed from someone else, that it be downtown so that while they're waiting to get their car charged up, they'll walk around and spend, you know, and go to restaurants.
My question is, is on the whole thing is, who pays for the power?
Right, they have to pay for the power. It would be, it would be a credit card meter or something. We're not gonna pay for it, no. It'll be Mr. Gizmo that says, you know, I mean, that was when it started.
Only draws power while you're charging, 'cause that's not the case of my homes. There's gotta be minimum fees for power every single month, which is fifteen dollars.
And that'll have to be put in, that'll have to be, it's a good point, that'll have to be put in, so like, let's say, we're gonna, actually, we're gonna talk about fees later on and what does the minimum fee for someone calling and asking for this and this and this? Is it five dollars, is it, so, I guess that'd have to be tacked on to them.
I, I'll say this much, that I have spent some time looking at various different equipment offers. There's a number of vendors that are out there that specialize in providing this equipment, all the way from little units that you put in your own garage to great big units that would be for a fleet and big buses. And there's quite a number that are right in the range that we would be looking for. There has been no conversation about putting it anywhere except where it's suggestible to Water Street. Because the goal is to get as many people down there wandering that street as we can, okay? And just as one example, and I haven't got them all priced out yet, I came across one that has, you can buy two of them at once, which is what we want. By the way, they all have the capability to accept in credit cards.
Oh, that's good.
So, the pricing of the, would be under our control as to what the fee is for the electricity. And you have to build into the cost of the electricity plus the cost of the insurance plus the cost of amortizing the equipment plus the reserve fee in case somebody runs the thing again for repairs. And it's a four-year commitment that's required, only four.
To get a grant, correct?
I'm sorry?
For the grant?
No, yeah, the grant, the grant requires a four-year commitment.
And what is the range of the grant?
Basically, they, it's, they will pay up to eighty percent but with a cap. And I don't have that information here in front of me, I'd give it to you if I did, but I don't remember what it is. But one of the pieces of equipment that I found, where you buy two of them together, the two of them together cost on the order of twenty-seven hundred dollars. So, if you assume that the installation and all the rest of the hookup doubles that, we're talking something less than six thousand. And if the grant pays eighty percent of that, you see that what we're looking to fund is a pretty small number. One of the things that we would very much like to do is to fund this outside of town plans.
Yeah.
We don't want the town to be paying for this, because we understand that we would never make the July ten together.
Well, because it's bringing people down to the business.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, if it's on private property or property that is somehow, we're not looking to take private, take parking spots that exist. We wanna take, we wanna create new parking spots for this equipment, and restrict them for this, for use of this equipment. And then to do this, obviously with the town sanctioned, but not with town approval of the funds.
Well, I still think the town has to put some money in it. I mean, I didn't even say the chamber would be the whole thing. Remember, when we put those signs up, and I was still part of the, head of the chamber, the town paid half. And we paid half, we paid a thousand to town, and actually Dan brought a lot of donations. And Chris, I'd like to know where the signs are, welcome to Lubec, you know, if they're not put up right now, because we never found a good spot though, down by the.
They're probably sort of alongside the old school sign, not that many.
We offered her a lot of pleasant street and water.
You did?
We talked to Dan, he was supposed to talk to.
I never heard, excellent, 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 even though we have now lost the picture on there, which, yeah.
If you find the sign, when you put it up there, we're okay with it.
Ah, well, you could maybe just change that briny to smoke.
No, it's just, or the smoke shed, whatever it is, it looks really nice, I'm just teasing. I don't know, that, I guess it's a, there should be a, if you're gonna have a viable chamber, it would be nice if it was partnered with the town. They never did, the town didn't do much when we, when the chamber was.
No.
It was all separate.
For years, for years, no.
So, and they picked their battles of what they wanted to do, but we were gonna, you know, we offered to have them do the pirate thing and they wanted it to be town, the town function. So, I'm not sure where the direction of the chamber is going yet, it's brand new.
JD, do you have an idea of where?
They need to be connected to the internet for the credit cards to work. So, the thoughts are somewhere in the vicinity of the library.
Yes, the library, right there in the library.
Behind, behind the library?
Well, there's several places that are in discussion, but I really don't wanna say where they are because, because they don't have anything up there.
Well, I was wondering about the packing lot across that Bobby Peacock owns, but maybe we could lease it for a dollar or whatever.
But then they're probably gonna sell.
That's, that's a little far for an internet connection.
Is it, is it too far away from the library?
For a wifi, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And you don't wanna have it right on Water Street. I don't want it behind the library.
No, you can't, because that's all public property.
Who have you been discussing with, you said it's under discussion with whom in the library?
Well, I'm part of the library.
Is there a committee?
No.
I'm part of the library, but Debbie Holmes is our partner.
Well, what, she wasn't, what did she say about the chamber?
Well, the chamber, according to her, is backing it.
So, didn't, didn't she, it doesn't, as far as I know, as far as I know, when I was president of the chamber, we had to have a board meeting and they all had to like agree, and I could never speak.
We have not done that.
So, you can't actually speak, I can't speak with the town and she can't speak with the chamber without a board vote.
This is, just to let you know that this discussion is happening.
Imagine that.
Okay. Discussions are happening.
Yes, it's a little preliminary to talk about the equipment.
Okay, but anyway, I think, my personal opinion is it's a great idea if it doesn't cost the town a lot of money and if we have to do a little bit of some money.
It costs the town no money.
It's why we ran with it, because you guys had already voted to do this last year.
Yes, yes. And it originally came from the cop, from, they, they were the ones who introduced it.
This is a department transportation thing, right?
Actually, the money comes from the Volkswagen D O T scandal. Volkswagen will be paying for it.
Well, I say, let's see where it goes, if it doesn't cost the taxpayers a nickel, how long do we have?
The D O T is managing the process.
It has a loan, comfortable with it, my understanding.
There's a what?
There's some kind of loan that comes.
You mean a grant?
Comes to play, right?
No, there's a grant, but there's money that needs to be raised too.
Right, besides.
Somebody's gotta pay for the rest.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wanting to change right there. And I, when I just understand, it's eighty, twenty, right?
Eighty, twenty.
So, it's like a typical D O T or any other grant, it's usually, most grants are twenty percent. So, if it's ten thousand dollars, we have to come up with two thousand somewhere, yeah.
Well, the other possibility is that it be private loans.
Yes, private, I don't know about loans, private donations.
Loans or donations.
I mean, there's plenty of people that are interested in it, like, it might not be us, but there is a bank of people that are interested in changing admissions. Well, I had been approached about a week ago by someone who knew about these charging stations, who said he was interested in getting some out at Cops Cook, the Cops Cook Trails or Park.
State Park?
Yeah, yeah, because many people come there and stay. So, yeah, it's, it's gonna happen.
Alright, so that'll be to be continued.
Yes. The only reason why we're discussing this is because we can't need the grant without the town's endorsement, otherwise we wouldn't be talking about this at all.
That's right, that's right.
You know, all of that, all these, when I went on grant.gov, which is what I had to go on to get the sixteen, eighteen million or whatever we're gonna hopefully get, I was, I was amazed, there are two thousand grants at a time. So, I'm like, oh, don't look at that, Carol, just go to the one little one you're working on and stop looking because, so there's, my point is there's so many grants out there that you can go for, and which ones do you back and which ones do the town endorse? Because Renee's only one person, I'm only one person, we're all just here doing the best we can, part-time. And if somebody needs to just be excited about this and go with it, and I think what Dan did, is he got private donations from the businesses to help pay for that sign. There are half of the signs for the town never had to pay. So, somebody in the town should be coming forward and wanting to get involved with this electric car thing and, and help get money. That's my feeling. So, we'll see if anybody comes forward. You know, some, right. Do you like that idea?
Yeah.
She's over here, we're gonna have to get her, take out her papers, now.
Maybe.
Oh, don't.
I do, honey.
Well, we like you. New business, H H bonds closeout authorization, okay, you've tried to explain this to me.
Okay. Yes, um, I don't know what year, well, nineteen nineteen, is that that far back?
I don't know, we can't, I suppose we gotta research and budget some.
Alright, so, there are some bonds that the town has that are coming, that have come to their end. They have to be closed out, and in order to close them out, we need the selectmen's signature on this document. But we're going to put it into a fund right now in the town books, and while we figure out what's the best route to put them in.
What, isn't there, wasn't it designated for something specific?
Yeah, enclosed in your packet, there is a copy, Suzette found them, the original town meeting minutes, Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to accept the sum of four thousand dollars bequeathed to the town of Lubec by Mrs., Mrs. Staples.
I don't know if it's. C Spider West.
C Spider West, well, it tested. To be invested by the superintendent of school committee, the annual income thereof be applied to the support of Lubec schools in the Lubec village. So, that's what they voted to do, they put a thousand of it, they bought bonds, two five hundred dollar bonds.
One one thousand.
Oh, one one thousand.
We also have two five hundred.
It, it's gotta be worth a lot more than a thousand dollars now.
It earned what, three hundred?
It's only worth a thousand, it earned three hundred dollars in interest.
And that money went to school.
And it was bought in nineteen nineteen?
No, like, I'm not sure, it was twenty-year bond, that's what it was originally.
Oh, so the bond only goes to maturity and then that's it, right? So, you're just, great for you to find out, it's just sitting there doing nothing, right? So, so we make a motion, and I need to go to school, 'cause she put it with a school.
Right, right.
So, I make a motion that we allow the bond to be put in.
Transferred.
Transferred, wa, and given to the school is what I.
Yeah.
Second.
What, what other school? The A O S? Because that's their administering.
Oh, I don't know.
Right, that's the question.
Why don't we discuss that with Tina?
Put it in a fund for now.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it go to the kids.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, like the boosters or.
Yeah, I think if it goes to A O S, it gets lost.
Sort of like the, uh, ethical program?
Yeah, anything like that.
Something for the children.
Something for the kids, yes.
The playground, yeah, maybe the playground. Right now, it says it's going to the general fund, but I think after we sign.
That's the only way the Federal Reserve will use it.
Okay, so after that, you wanna make a motion to put it somewhere, uh, somewhere for the, okay, so we'll make a motion to deposit it into the general fund account. Second, all in favor?
Is that the right word, just that it's gonna be a closeout?
Says the bond will be deposited into, this law court authorizes Suzette's plan to stress retention of the H H series bond, serial number or whatever, in the amount of a thousand dollars, money to be deposited in the general fund account. But then, at some point.
Then we can write a check to the school.
Yes, and then you have a, then they'll meet and you can decide where you want to go. This is just, and it might not be for a month or so before it's actually deposited, and that's just something that takes time.
Yeah. Alrighty. Vehicle maintenance bid. I think we got a bid the day after the bids went out and there was no vehicle maintenance bid, so the, our question is, do you wanna accept a bid now that we got a day late? There was no bid opening, so there was no information on, you know, it's not like there's anything private. So, Johnny, come later.
Well, I mean, year after year, we bid it out, year after year, we bring it wherever we gotta bring it anymore.
But they have to charge, wherever, we, we usually get a few bids and they have to charge what they say in the bid, though.
No, no, I'm saying, we can bring anybody in town where you have to. They use all mechanics and down anyway, which they should.
I would like to bid fifty-five dollars an hour for vehicle maintenance and repairs. Thank you for your support in the past, we appreciate your business, Randy Hall. What would you like to do with this bid?
I would like to accept this bid.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Fee schedule review. So, the other day, someone called up and wanted the, wanted the appraisal card, and then they wanted it copied, and then they wanted it scanned, and then they wanted it emailed, and I'm thinking to myself, are we charging for any of that? 'Cause when you walk in, you have to pay for a copy, that's one thing, but they were on the phone wanting, and that's like a twenty-minute job. You have to get the thing out of the file, then you have to go and you have to scan it, then you have to go back to your computer and open it up and put it on as attachment and send it to this person, and, well, I was just questioning, we had no fee for it, so now we have a fee, our fee schedule, that's why, that's why I'm here, fee schedule review, because last August in the annual town meeting, the town voted for the select board to be able to review the fee schedule and that we could, um, update the fee schedule without changing ordinances. So, for example, two years ago, we changed the harbor board so the fee schedule would go to us with recommendations from the harbor board. And that this Shellfish Committee's recommendation would come to us, and before they were inside of an ordinance, and when a fee's inside an ordinance, there's this huge legal procedure to change the ordinance over changing something by ten dollars. So, now it's all on its own fee schedule, and I thought we'd review it, so.
So, I went through and started writing down things that are already changed.
So, that's what's these.
Yeah, handwritten stuff is from me.
And probably we needed to, um, accept the changes, or they're state changes.
No, these are state mandated.
Okay, so these ones here are all state mandated?
The vital statistics, yep, it's fifteen dollars for a copy, and six dollars for additional, burial permits are fine, and marriage licenses are forty.
Does this all go to the town?
Uh, no, a portion of it goes to town, a portion of it goes to state. Very small, like twenty cents for additional copies, I don't, I'd have to.
Like for marriage licenses, they raise it up to forty dollars, but we get any, anything for doing all the work?
We get to keep some, but I don't know what else to tell them.
I'd love to know what we'll, I mean, that's where all the time goes.
That's right.
It's why we have to have all these employees, there's so much stuff that we have to do. We should be finishing, we should be getting some money for it.
We do.
Okay, dog licenses are the same?
They are the same, except for the late fee is twenty-five dollars per dog. And it's not after annual clinic, it's after January thirty-first, that's state law. Everything else is what we do.
So, all, all these copies, and you could, everything's online now, right? The copy of the, the, you can go on your own computer and get most of it. When was the last time, like, set a tax math, when was the last time that was?
I didn't really have any input, I mean, the only thing that you could really gauge these fees off of is what it actually costs you to rent the copy or lease the copy or buy the paper.
Yeah. And, and there should be things in every town, I mean, you could almost find out what everybody else charges. Let's review the permit section, in case anyone had some interest in.
I, well, I would kinda think we should go over the, uh, over this with the budget committee.
Well, this is revenue.
Yeah, I mean, we should go through this with the budget committee and, and get their input, suggestions, I mean, like shoreline zoning and subdivision, that should go to the building committee.
Well, the planning board, later on, tonight, we're having a whole new, this thing on that, but it's a good idea, we're gonna have one last budget meeting on June, on June twelfth, do you wanna just defer this to discussing with the budget committee first?
I think so.
It's a good idea.
I added the twenty-dollar fee for building notification, 'cause that wasn't on there, that is, that's already in an ordinance. Mourn fees changed from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars for resident, for the beyond resident, hoist fees are different, this whole document just needs to be updated.
Right, I think that, that'd be perfect.
Okay, I like that idea.
I'd like a little bit, maybe we could figure this out right now, is the research, under the research heading?
Yeah, that's the thing that started this, my thing. Tax information research, five dollars per document, one dollar each add.
I don't know what this means, because we, the research, as it says right there, the ten dollars per hour after the first hour is, the first hour has to be free, that's by state law. We can have that to say fifteen dollars per hour, that's as high as we can raise it. But where, when do we start charging this five dollars per document, how does that apply? I don't, I don't know.
I think that probably means copying.
For copying. Well, copy prices are already set up over here, fifty cents a sheet, so that's why I was confused.
Well, I don't think this has been reviewed for quite a while.
Hmm, yeah.
See all, see all of the, um. Well, we updated the mourn fees and the shelfish fee, we did update that, but that's because we were able to take them out of the ordinance, but we're just about to discuss building permits and, and ordinance, and we definitely want the fees not in the ordinance, we want it on here, because, because then you're gonna have to go through the whole public hearing, public hearing, this special town meeting, just to change it by ten bucks.
On the fees, like on the document fee, seventy-five percent of our requests are either email or fax, so you're eliminating your copy charge and you're doing nothing.
We don't have a thing for email.
That's the problem, well, that's the whole problem, was when the, when the gentleman called and wanted you to do research and scan and, and attach and email, there should be a fi, I thought it should be, like, five dollars.
Yeah.
I gotta email the other page.
Which, which is, you know, which adds up if you get three requests a day.
I got, uh, email the lady who wants the last five years' tax commitment on one property.
Oh, so, you know, there you go, so how do you?
That's where you get the first hours free and then you gotta charge.
But then you can charge the five dollars for actually using the equipment, 'cause even though you're not making a copy, you're using the scanning part of the copy machine, and that's, you're taking a lifespan of the machine, plus you're using your computer and.
Plus the paper lease to enable that.
Yes, so, I mean, I think it should be a basic five dollar, call, open the phone and ask you to do some.
Well, we've got that in place, we just needed definitions of what it is.
Right, what it is, yes. Well, and, you know, it's updated now, and so it's just thing of copies, not the money.
Alright, I'll work on updating this whole sheet as a new today, and then you guys can vote on it next, next time.
We'll talk to the budget committee about it.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Oh, you should mention that this is an agenda item that this is no longer needed, it's, you skipped over it.
I skipped over Pirates and Residents, 'cause you said, I took it off already.
Oh, okay, I didn't.
She wasn't here.
Right, she's not here, so.
Property taxes due may, oh, property taxes are due May thirty-first. And what is the, if you have, you get, you accrue interest on your bill up to June thirty it, but if you pay by June thirty, you don't get in the book? Oh, sweet. And nobody wants to be in the book, do we?
No.
I've been a minute. Oh, same, Harvey, great. Uh, just my question to you all, I would like to have permission to work either before or after, I have to work from eight to five, and I have this huge grant to get in with Julie, and I might be here at some odd hour of like six o'clock, to like upload thirty pages and send off.
Suzette will be here.
Well, I'm thinking if I come at six-thirty in the morning, I was thinking Suzette would be here, so I just don't want my car here and people wondering, well, what is Carol doing in the office? I, from now until like June thirtieth, I may have to be here.
Has to be in by June thirtieth?
Yes, well, yes, it's gonna be fine. She spent the whole day aquatic eyes, looking at all of the different, um, I have faith in you, it's gonna be good.
Federal.
Federal, yeah. Everybody meet me at the church later with the candles, maybe some prayers. So, of that, do I have a, do I need a vote for the, I can, I just.
No, we're just, it's okay, it's fun.
Alright, yeah, I'm not here, you know, have a fun.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe it's fun. Shellfish warden decided to retract his, his resignation and he's gonna continue to do it for a while, is that it?
Yeah, that's basically it. Our Shellfish warden, who has the power to patrol and summons, has another job. He's working closely with his deputy, um, and the deputy is patrolling during the week, and the warden is patrolling on the weekends.
And working for a while.
So, it's working out, because, so he said he's willing to rescind, but what I suggested, we have posted, the position is open, and the way that we ran it was, will be filled when, when the suitable.
Probably suitable candidate.
Was so, it could be, or has it, and nobody was.
And then you could always say you filtered and trimmed, which covers all the bases.
Yeah, so, just letting you know that we, we still have very active patrolling and enforcement on our land flats, so everybody needs to get their licenses and not dig in closed areas.
So, are there another business then, it's the planning board ordinance, yeah? I don't know, we got this lovely packet here.
Oh, okay.
And so, my only suggestion is, and I did get someone from the planning board came to visit me and, and said that we needed to update our ordinance, because a lot of building had been going on, and we had been avoiding, you know, some people didn't know that they had to require, help me with this, Jessica Jason, you know a little more about this. So, like, the D E P requirements and all, but I, but what I, what I get, what I'm getting here is just, um, an ordinance, we probably can work with the ordinance we have and just update it by saying, please refer to the requirements of A, B, C, D, whatever forms are in here, do not have to be in the ordinance, it just has to be the legal words to say that if you're going to build, you must follow the guidelines of the D E P, please see page, please refer to this pocket, so that if this package changes, we don't have to do the legal thing on the ordinance again. So, we wanna keep the ordinance really simple, but it probably needs to be added that you have to comply with the state regulations as well, and I haven't had a chance to like do that, I think it's planning board thing.
That's why we, we put this together, and we pass it out to you guys, want you to overlook it, mark out, write it.
Good job.
Whatever, and then we'll get it all finalized, because if you've seen the letters on the front, it's from the D E P telling us what the town of Lubec needs to do.
Right.
That way, demo, asbestos, everything's covered in that package, and we just need to get it finalized, approved through you guys, before we.
Right.
Cut and chop and do what?
Well, I think, I think we're then looking at two different things, we're looking at, does this need to be changed, or does this just need to be, when someone applies for a building permit, they need to be given the, an updated packet, which would be helpful. And I think the permit, the building permit fee may need to be just raised a little bit, And I think the permit, the building permit fee may need to be just raised a little bit, seeing as this packet is a little bit, it's a little bit much.
Well, and it's tearing houses down too. Gary, Gary's been excellent at that.
Right.
You know, watching out for what has to be done, and I've had a few folks ask me some questions.
Demolition per, so do we have a demolition permit right now?
Yes, it's a state permit, state law, the town don't have it, and it's in there.
It's right, yes.
Demolition of a structure.
Demolition and asbestos both is covered on the same.
Yeah, both building and demolition permit together, which we don't have. This is a town, town of Brunswick, so we...
That's what we've added to this package. And then there's the shoreline zoning is in there, and then demolition is in there. Mobile home for setting and removing mobile homes is added to the package. We put the asbestos and added to it.
Covering ordinance, yeah.
And all the contractors and landfill numbers and people that they need to call, instead of calling us here wanting to know the number to it, it's already added into the packet. And if you plan on burning, we've added that into the back of the package. It gives you everything you need to know about burning on site.
What you can, can't burn in.
Right.
Okay, so I don't know whether this needs to go to, but this isn't a, this is not an ordinance. This is, this is just requirements by the state and their applications.
It's an informational packet.
Yeah, so I don't see why this would be waiting to August to be approved of.
And if you're not changing the...
We're not changing the ordinance.
That's it, that's it.
It has to read that we, we will fall.
And then on the last page, if you look at it, it says, when they turn that back in to get the permit, the, it says, I have read, I understand, and right there, you hold them live, wanting to release it to town. The DEP coming back on us like we've had a comeback on it.
I, don't you love some...
This is just a building notification ordinance, it needs to say, town of Lubac, building slash demolition. So it probably does seem to be slightly updated, 'cause it does not include demolition right now, and that's the big thing that we're, we're going through. So, um, this is a good start, and I did talk to...
It's like a great start.
Um, we'll have, we need to table this till next time, so we'll have a chance to look at it.
I talked to quite a few people, Gary's always, and he's gonna, they're, they're very impressed with the job, so, explaining what they have to do.
Every day I say, great job, be thrilled.
Done a really good job at it.
I quit, but they don't need to me running around.
That's right.
But, uh, you know, like we said, every one of those has got the same packet, I mean, we all got the same packet. And we'll compare what you guys want and don't want, and like you see on the second or third page, the cost. If you go by that cost, the town will, will need to bar it or grant, and we're not gonna charge thirty some cents per inch of living space that you're gonna build. So we've marked that out already, and we...
Yeah, I mean...
It's very simple.
Talking, talking.
But you probably wanna take, if you're gonna change this at all, you wanna take the fee out, so that it could be changed to fifty dollars at some point, or whatever. It's twenty-five now. You should never, you should never put a fee in any ordinance, it should be separate, so that you can, you don't have to change the ordinance every time you wanna change a fee.
Yeah, you can just add, every year, say, hey, we raised it.
Well...
Talking, talking.
Or not, or not.
Yeah.
Talking to John Boogie of the DEP. We don't have a choice. This is law, it's been law for many years.
And, and we should, we should've had a demolition.
Years ago.
Yeah, so we just, it looks to me like their application has both building and demolition together. So we might, we might just do the ordinance, town of Lubac, building slash demolition ordinance, and make it simple. And you must abide by the state laws, and then you have a little link to the website, and then you just have updated packets. Don't put the packets inside the ordinance, and you're gonna change that again. I think it's simpler. But, um, I'll put the planning board if you want.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be together.
We'll get it together, do you wanna have a, a joint meeting on it, or?
Well, we can at the next one.
Do you want the, some planning board representatives to come and hash it out as to what should be in the ordinance, or? I think if they could just...
You're gonna go to a planning board meeting, right?
Is that what we should do? Or, I was, no, I was suggesting a joint meeting.
Oh, okay.
I agree with you.
I mean, the planning board meeting.
Once they get that finalized, or get their, their...
No, I think they, it seems to me like they're asking for us to help them.
Yes.
Doing it together as a joint ordinance, ordinance together, so, uh, what is...
I don't want them to think that we're sticking, you know, you know.
But they, yeah, they came to us and asked.
That's what we passed it out, what you guys look at it, and then write in, then we'll sit down and, and work it all out, and take out what we don't want into the package, and before we send it off, 'cause, you know, they're from Portland, they're from Mati, they're from, uh, Lebronsway.
Yeah, they got them all over.
So, Burnsway, so, you know, we need to change all the names, and, and then the writing, we marked it out, what's said in the town, we put Lubac, so everything's gotta be reposed and...
Yes, and they do, yeah, okay.
But we want feedback before we send it on and...
When's the next planning board meeting?
Would be June eighteenth.
Alright, do we know what day it is?
How about June twenty-sixth, which is before...
Twenty-sixth, yeah, I'm on vacation.
June twenty-sixth is, um, like, at five o'clock before, 'cause we'll be done with the budget on the twelfth, so then we can come at five on the twenty-sixth.
Five o'clock on twenty-sixth.
And if everybody would please look and see how we can simplify, and, and make little notes, notes on your, some come prepared, so...
They've been, they've been working on this for a long time.
At five o'clock, yeah. Well, then they probably have an idea of what they want.
Yep, I think they do.
They do double the EDP.
Thank you very much, Gary, I appreciate it.
Gary, you're doing awesome job.
No, there was something else, another business I was supposed to bring up, and I don't remember his name, but Ralph, the harbor master, Brad, somewhere where this, um, this lawyer from Bangor is gonna be, um, taking a boat from Bangor up to Lubac and ending his trip in Lubac on, for cancer. And, um, I thought it would be nice if we had like agreed to him. And he's gonna start July third, it's gonna take anywhere from a week to ten days, and he was really excited about it when, when Ralph called him. I think it's a sixteen foot kind of a kayak with a sail.
Oh.
But, um, we could do it at the marina, but it, he, he was so excited when the, he thought that, I said, well, I have to bring him to the select board. To see if the town wants to just say, yay, that's really great, and, or maybe, you know, have a, I don't know, just some of, just, uh, some of us to greet him. We won't, we won't know exactly when he's gonna get here till, 'cause he has navigation equipment and GPS and phones. We won't know, but it'll be sometime between, I'll make sure it's down in the weekend, Joanne. He has to come on a Wednesday.
It'd be like the thirteenth, right?
Something like the thirteenth, so would we like to do that?
Sure.
And, oh, and would you like to be there, maybe?
If it doesn't conflict, there's something that's already on the calendar.
Okay, well, none of them are gonna show up, yeah. Well, anyway, I just was wanting to ask permission to see if we could do something like that. He's a very well-known lawyer, I apologize.
A lawyer or a doctor?
No, he's a lawyer. And I can't, no, can't remember that. But he did email me, and I was supposed to print it off, and I got this question. But I'll, I'll let you know next time who it, who it is, but, um, it's been in the paper, it was in the paper, it was in the Bangor Daily News two days ago. And it's just that he's ending his whole trip in Lubac, so I thought, well, that would be nice.
Hello, there's one more little announcement.
Yes.
Um, Gary doesn't even know, this'll be surprising too. I got notification today, um, the three people that took advantage of the second replacement grant that we announced a few months ago have been approved to move on to the second stage.
Yay.
You know, Gary?
Good.
Yeah, I've already got with Bruce, and he said what he thinks, how he'll go, we'll get together with the second stage. You know, I'm pushing, right?
I did, so good. So we're going to, thanks for the session, I forgot, I need a, we need a motion to go into exec, oh, public comment. Oh, many of them.
I was a bad boy to make.
Harbor, harbor board is the third, uh, month, third Monday of the month, on six?
Six o'clock.
Okay, that's okay.
County CNNS is June twenty-fourth at four-thirty at Medivac Hall.
You're mistaken.
Um, recycle is June fourteenth, Friday, four o'clock. Alright, and let's see, um, shellfish is at six o'clock on the third, on June third. And we're gonna have the last budget meeting at five, the fourth select board meeting on the twelfth. And State Harbor is going to be announced, not yet. Oh, I had one other thing I have to ask, and then, can I put something in? I forgot, I was working on another fifteen thousand dollar grant. I'm trying to get enough money for the, for the, um, geotech survey, which is fifty thousand, and I applied for thirty thousand, it's a seventy-five hundred dollar match, which we have, and this is another fifteen, so together, and I'm hoping I'll come down on that price a little. But it's a very sophisticated study on the whole bottom of the ground, to make sure we can in fact spend all that money on it. So I wanted to, permission to apply for the coastal communities grant program. It's due June third.
I made that motion, I'll, I'll second that.
My spare time. So now, we need to...
No, I thank you guys, you, you guys are doing, I think you're doing a really good job on that.